Okay, it is 7 o'clock. We're meeting in the second floor courtroom in the Hood County courthouse. We're now called to order. Commissioner Roan, would you give the invocation, please?
Father, we ask your blessings on these proceedings tonight that they might be civil and productive from the standpoint of getting those things necessary done for the county. We ask your wisdom and your guidance to our decision-making process. We ask that all those presence have your will in mind when they speak as well. And we ask now that you bless all of us, all of our troops who are serving in foreign countries and at home. And, once again, these proceedings, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
To join me, please, we pledge the flag of a great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Show me the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Bob, we have any special presentations tonight? Not this evening? Very good. Does any citizen wish to make comments on any agenda item? If so, the sheriff has a form for you. Anyone? Okay, the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull any item off the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Go move.
Motion made by Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all very much. The next item is subdivision roads and plats, road ops.
I'd like to hold a public hearing to set the speed limit on two roadways, both of them located in Precinct One, north end of the county in the La Pan community area. The first one is Chandler Road. The pavement width is 18 foot and it's about a mile and a half in length. Road operations would recommend setting a speed limit of 35 miles per hour. And on the second one, Light Road, with the same width of pavement, but it's about two and a half miles in length. Road operation does recommend that we set these two speed limits on these two individual roads.
Okay, a public hearing is now open to discuss and consider approval of setting a 35 mile an hour speed limit on Chandler Road and a 40 mile an hour speed limit on Light Road. Does anyone, any citizen wish to make any comments about these two items? No one. Then the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to approve these two?
Go move.
Second. Was that Commissioner Roan? Or Commissioner Simpson, seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Development and compliance, public hearing to consider take appropriate action to replat Lot 616R Canyon Creek. The public hearing is now open. Does anyone wish to make any comments about the replat of Lot 616R Canyon Creek 3, Unit Anyone? Then the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve this replat.
Go move.
Second. I have a motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Simpson. Is there any further discussion on this item? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all very much. Budget and finance.
Judge and Commissioners, there are three budget amendments that I provided to you earlier. The first is a request to provide for an increase in the salaries of the nurses in the jail. And those were 3 percent increases approved already by the hospital district. It's $1,144 for salaries for the balance of the year and $176 for the related social security taxes and retirement match. And then Constable 1 and 2, Constable Hart could not be here tonight, he's out of town, but he has requested to move $1,100 out of general contingency into his line for a clerk. That's to cover the accrued leave time for his existing clerk who will be planning to be out on medical leave. And the district judge has asked to move $1,100 into contract interpreter out of his line for outside court reporters to cover a bill that was made necessary in a recent case. Be glad to entertain any questions you have on those. I recommend them for your approval.
I talked to the Constable at length today about that and one time previously, so I'm in support of that move as well for a position he's got to cover during, I believe, a family leave situation. He's at a funeral out of town, south of San Antonio, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Aren't you glad I remembered your name tonight, Commissioner?
Once in a row.
Once, yeah, that's pretty good. Any further discussion on this item? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider payment of bills.
Judge and Commissioners, the total bills for your consideration come to $267,374.20. Some of you have asked that I make a separate accounting to you for the amounts that relate to the adult probation operations. And so I will begin to do that every court tonight. They represent $858.42. The adult probation department does pay Hood County a little over $200 a month for processing payment of their bills. And it's just necessary that we have a public hearing of those so that they go into the public record. But the judge and several of you have asked that I state those separately, so I have done that tonight. The larger items, there is breakthrough communications, $41,148.65. This is for radios and batteries that relate to a reimbursement grant that the sheriff's been working on. Then to the City of Granbury for utilities, $32,160.95. An internal transfer to the general fund, and that is from the general fund to Fund 112, $28,518 for indigent defense attorney fees. And then what we talked about the last meeting, to go ahead and pay train, $52,575 for their billing on the courthouse restoration, and then we'll follow up with discussions after that. Nelda has pointed out one item that she did not get a chance to review ahead of time. And so this is a request to be reimbursed from Cheryl, who is court reporter in Judge Messina's court. They had shut down for a day that was dedicated to putting computers in the courtroom that the court had already approved. And they only had the one day to do it. They were told that they needed some connecting devices, cables and the like, and it was going to take a few days for them to be ordered and arrive. Cheryl took it on herself to find the items at Staples, and she went and put them on her personal credit card. Then there was also a need to update a software application on her computer to put everything in order. The total of that came to $118.29. And Nelda has asked that anybody who's buying any kind of supplies, contact her office first and give her an opportunity to assist, to do her job. I think in the particular case Cheryl was just trying to get the work done. She was trying to avoid a three-day delay in the court. So I think it's necessary for the court, if I am going to pay this, for the court to ratify this on her behalf. Because Nelda is right, she never had a chance to say yes or no, and that's what the law But those are the bills. If you have any questions about them, I'd be glad to try to answer your questions that you might have.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to ratify the bills and approve that expense for those computer items that...
Did she not try to get ahold of Nelda or anything to do this?
I really think in the rush of trying to get things done, you know, it was just a mistake she made hustling, trying to avoid a delay, and no, sir, she did not give Nelda an opportunity to weigh in on that.
Ratify paying the bills, but I tell you, we need to stop doing this kind of stuff without going the right channel.
I think she's probably aware of that. It's just a, it was an urgency need, rather than shut the court down for everybody else involved for that couple of days. She was trying to do the right thing, she just took the wrong path, but I'm sure she's aware of that now. But I'd second the motion.
Yes, and we will visit with them and make sure we emphasize the importance of doing things in the right order.
It's a law issue as much as it is a policy issue.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Heatherton, seconded by Commissioner Roan to ratify paying the bills. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C miscellaneous, consider and take appropriate action on filling a vacant, full-time position at the Hood County Library. Courtney?
Judge and Commissioners, I had a full-time employee leave on maternity leave, and she has officially resigned, no FMLA. And I'm approaching you all this evening to see if you would allow me to fill that position since the hiring freeze went into effect April 1st. We are getting into our busy time, the summer reading program, so I would really appreciate it if you would let me fill this position.
Also, I believe when you've talked to me about it, you'd have to adjust the hours of the...
The hours, less children's programs, especially for summer.
It's a lot of heat.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton to approve. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider request from Texas Assessor Collector to allow hiring one person for an open position due to an employee transfer and take appropriate action.
Good evening, Judge and Commissioners. I just wanted to come to you tonight to ask you to approve my hiring someone to fill a vacant position. I had an employee transfer to another county department, so I need to replace her. And I wanted to just kind of, for the record, remind you, if you are not aware, back in the fall when I lost someone, there was a hiring freeze. And then when the hiring freeze was lifted, I did not replace that person. We decided that we could try to hold off on replacing that person, and then if we have budget cuts, you know, deep and have to lay somebody off, I didn't want to have to hire somebody and then turn around and lay them off at budget time again. So just did not fill that position. So we are actually down one position already that we've given up. With the boat season and the heavy boat traffic that we're seeing, and just the heavy traffic in the office in general, I'd like to replace this person.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Simpson to approve. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Consider and take appropriate action on the following resolutions, Clean Air Resolution and Anti-IDling Resolution. I presume everybody's read those, I won't read those. But what this is part of the EPA, I got a question just before Commissioners' Court meeting tonight about what's happening on the EPA with, as far as it goes to put us in the non-attainment for ozone levels. So we went to Dallas yesterday and met with them. It doesn't look very encouraging right now, but it's not a dead deal yet, and we're still working on it. But I do not want our inspections to go up from 1250 to 50 or 1450 to 50 or 60 dollars, whatever it is. You know, I mean, it's going to be rough. Companies are going to have to retool their inspection stations. A lot of things are going to have to change if they put us in that, and we're trying to see that that doesn't happen. But anyway, these are just, these are resolutions. Don't let your, you know, we should support a clean air, and we're also, we, you know, for a number of reasons, one being the uses of fuel. We don't want to have cars, especially county cars, sitting around idling, and anyone else's too, if they can keep from it. So I would entertain a motion to approve both. All right, motion made by Commissioner Heatherton, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Simpson, seconded. Any further discussion on these two items? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item number four is consider and take appropriate action regarding Hood County joining the Hood Clean Air, Hood County Clean Air Coalition. And basically, this is the same thing. It is a group of people who are dedicated to trying to keep us out of this non-attainment for the eight-hour ozone. And it is just methods that we can come up with to help us improve our air quality. Does anybody have any discussion on this, or anybody?
If you haven't seen the paperwork, it's the county. All cities that have a mayor that have been invited, today we met with, at Mike Scott's office, at the chamber office. It's the second meeting. Joy Grisham is the one that's kind of ramrodding that, and you're the temporary chair, I believe. Is that correct, Judge?
That's true.
So it's about 12 people meeting as this moves forward, and we get our weight on our wording from EPA in late April or early May. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton to approve. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consider and take appropriate action on the burn ban. I believe that we would love to table this right now. Is that not right?
This is in conjunction with the EPA. It's not because of the index, or Brian hasn't come forward at this time. He did an excellent job putting together the formula. What we've seen other counties do that have been affected by the Clean Air Coalition group is usually the ozone layers are higher in the summer months. So I believe in his wording, you asked for May 1st through October 31st, we'd have a burn ban in place during those times. Isn't that correct, Brian, what you put in place? If we adopted it now, or was it June or something?
That is correct.
Okay. And it's really designed so that, obviously, as we get into the summer months, we're usually in a burn ban. But it's another way that we can show the government and the EPA that we're trying to be proactive instead of reactive. So you want to comment on what you did, or how you presented that?
You know, for the most part, it's not going to change a lot of the daily operations of what people are doing. What's going to really prevent is the large agricultural burns going on at one time. When somebody's got 20, 30 brush piles on, you know, 10, 15 acres, and they light them all off at once, that contributes to a lot of, you know, pollution right then and there, pushes those numbers through the roof. So that's going to be the major impact. It would limit it to one brush pile per nine acres per day, basically. And that's going to be the major impact.
The North Central Texas Council of Government's had a representative there today, and what he suggested was not to impose this burn ban until we actually heard back from the EPA. And that way, since we are in a wet spell, it will give people a chance to burn for the next 30 days, possibly, before we have to implement this, if we do adopt it. So I'll make a motion, we table it for now.
I already have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton to table item number five on miscellaneous. Any further discussion on this? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Consider and take appropriate action in allowing the Granbury Theater productions in the courthouse. And I believe that Mike Scott wants to make some comments on this.
I do, Judge, but I'd really like to defer to Andrew Barris initially, if that would be okay, and then follow up. Andrew? Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us on this. What we're hoping to do is, we've got something that falls under the umbrella of what they're doing for the Fourth of July from the Chamber of Commerce. We would like to do a production of 1776 in the courthouse. We feel like this production would be very beneficial for the community. We feel like it's a perfect setting, first of all, for the show. Just looking at it the other day, from some of the logistical issues, there are some acoustic things that we could take a look at to do some repairing on. And we feel like that when it comes down to it, we've got some additional things that night, from a laser show at the courthouse as well. It'll be a good flow of traffic on the square, from people going out of the courthouse, from the show onto the square, getting as many people involved as possible. So we're part of this organization with Chamber of Commerce, and certainly feel like that we could lend a hand in getting as many people as possible down in the square by doing the show inside the courthouse.
Andrew, do you foresee having to do any kind of remodeling, let's say, for lack of a better word, because of the acoustical problems?
I don't think so. You know, what we would do is, we've got some acoustic issues, clearly, that we'd have to address. We would have to deal with some sound reinforcement issues. We feel like there are a lot of things that we would have to do from a curtain standpoint. Right now, there's a lot of echo that's in the space that we'd have to eliminate. So we're thinking in terms of putting on the seats, specific cushions, if you will, maybe some things underneath the seats. All these things could be taken out. There would be some lighting that we need to put in as well, but this could be eliminated on a nightly basis, as well as some sound. So we would set up and strike on a daily basis and take it out that night. It's pretty low-level stuff, right? We don't need to kill it with lighting. It's more the acoustics that we'd worry about. So I would say, you know, we would have to take a look at some of the things as far as banners and flags from the 13 original colonies that we put in for the show. Maybe roll out some carpets, right, to deaden the space a little bit. I think the challenges are not so much from the lighting standpoint and from taking out all the gear, it's more from fixing the sound issues. So I think we can do that as well.
You may end up giving us some good ideas.
I think so. I think, you know, it's, as far as a usable space for theater, I think it certainly could be a usable space for what you folks do as well, going forward.
You're not going to fix anything to the walls permanently, or anything like that?
No, not at all. Yeah, everything that we would do, we very, very temporary. And if it was required, we'd certainly take it out on a nightly basis. Clearly, we would not affect anything long-term.
And what was your dates again?
We would like to open the show on the 22nd of June and the 23rd, but we're requesting as well to have rehearsals on the 20th and the 21st, two rehearsals. Those would be evening rehearsals. If we needed to adjust that, we can certainly do it in the early afternoon. And then we've got the 29th and 30th, these are all Fridays and Saturdays. We would do two performances on the 4th, one round about 3:30, one at 7 o'clock. And then two performances on the next weekend, which would be, I believe, the 8th and the 9th.
Your 501(c)(3), is that correct?
We're pending 501(c)(3) right now. We are a nonprofit organization currently.
Question about insurance. Liability insurance for the cast, production?
Sure.
The group, the audience? Are you going to provide insurance for that?
Well, we just did our opening performance at the conference center, and we supplied all of the liability insurance to the tune of a million dollars for that product, for that project. However, we feel like we fall under the umbrella of the Chamber of Commerce for the entire Fourth of July festivities. If not, and certainly that could be worked out with Mr. Scott, then we certainly would handle that ourselves.
Okay.
Well, I'm definitely for it. You know, I think that we need to use this courthouse more than it's being used. Not only this, but I would like to have some, maybe art exhibits or something like that in here from time to time. But I'm definitely in favor of this.
I really don't see any difference on when we let the chamber use the outside of the courthouse, or we let the historic merchants use it. They make a profit, or they sell booth rental space to individuals that set up their tents or their, you know, whatever they're selling. I think it's an opportunity to let someone get in here and try and look at our acoustic problem, and at the same time showcase the inside of the courthouse. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Roan. Any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Consider and take appropriate action to change stock law for Hood County to close range, I believe Sheriff.
Judge, Commissioners, I ask that you put this on the agenda so we could get started working in that direction. One of the things that we need to do is get a petition together. That is started, but it's not ready. So we're, I'll give you some information tonight, and then we'll ask that you table it until, like, May 8th, I believe is the first court of May. And then we'll see where we stand then, and have some other meetings with concerned citizens in between now and then. A lot of the reason why I brought this to court, so we could get it eventually, hopefully, for the November election, is, over the years, me as a deputy now, as a sheriff, that sends my deputies out there to deal with a lot of these calls. We have lots of nuisance-type calls with livestock getting out on the roads. In the last year, we've had 620 calls for service, and most of them average at least 30 minutes, and some of them take more than, more than that, plus more people than just one deputy to get some cattle in, or horses, or goats, a lot of different things. I know last year I was out in the heat of the summer with one bull that we had a deputy tied up from about 8 o'clock in the morning until it was around noon, when we finally got this thing put in. And he was big as a car, and he wasn't too cooperative. But we finally got him in. So it takes a lot of man-hours, a lot of effort to deal with a lot of this stuff. And we're not going after the citizens that have cattle and raise cattle and have, and make a living doing that, and not to give them any troubles at all. Just the nuisance problems that we have when they get out 20, 30, 40 times, a lot of it is business people that lease property, and they're raising the cattle and they don't even live there. Sometimes they don't even live in the county. And those are the ones that we're dealing with a lot of times, until finally some cow gets out on the highway and gets hit by a vehicle. That did happen out at Toler here, Wausau. And then I was out in the middle of the night trying to round up a couple of cows. We've had dealings with horses, going through other people's property, just lots of different things. It's just been an ongoing thing. So we want to do this right, we want to make sure everybody's on board with it. Like I said, part of this issue is getting a petition brought before court so that you can take that, accept that, hopefully vote on it and pass it, then we'll get it on the November election. But I ask at this time that, unless you have any other questions of me, that we table this until at least May 8th, and I'll come back with more information by then.
Okay.
Go move.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Roan, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton to table this issue until May the 8th. Any further discussion?
All I would discuss is, Marty's gotten tons of phone calls today, so would you check with Marty Valencamp as well, so that, I know we've all had people in our office visiting with us about it today, and I know Kelton's had people in his office visiting with him, but would you get with Marty, since he's agriculture extension agent, and discuss this with him as well?
Yep, we'll talk to him, and we'll, I'll probably call for some special meetings up at my office, so we can sit down and discuss some things, and probably invite some of you guys, too, so.
Changing this from open to closed. Now, if somebody's cow gets out, you can't write them a ticket or can't do anything?
No, there really isn't anything.
If it's closed, if it's closed, then you can, right?
It's closed, then we have more teeth that we can do something about it, yes.
You can write tickets or pick the animals up, or what?
Yes, we can, because then it's, once it's a closed range, then they have the obligation per the law to keep the cattle in. So the nuisance calls, then that's how we'd be able to deal with those. Whereas we can't really now, other than go take the time to put up the cattle, horses, goats, whatever it is.
I understand that the cold, the open, you've got, if you don't want the cows bothering your stuff, you've got to fence it in yourself. And a closed means that whoever they belong to has to keep them on their place.
Correct.
So, okay.
Okay. All for questions. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed, motion carried. Item number eight, I believe that Mr. Blessin has a report.
Month with the coast-to-coast prescription cards, which we, which are free to the public. And we have some numbers. There were 32 reported claims. Net savings was $731.51, and the average savings was 29.6% on the prescriptions that were filled. This is our first month, and there was a check deposited in our account. But I think you'll find the numbers will continue to grow as people get more... But I think you'll find the numbers will continue to grow as people get more oriented to these.
More and more cards out?
Absolutely.
I have a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
Same move. I have a motion made by Commissioner Heatherton, seconded by Commissioner Simpson. Any further discussion? I know I've gotten reports on this, and, you know, employee once said his brother, or brother, their normal prescription was like $65, and they got it for 29.
Correct.
So it was, you know, big savings, and I've had a couple of others come to me. So it's, it's been really good. But this is for all citizens. This is not just for Hood County employees. So anybody that doesn't have a drug plan can get one of these cards and take it to the accepting pharmacies and get a discount on their medications. Okay. Item number nine is consider and take appropriate action to approve Hood County's interlocal agreement with Parker County to contract tire removal services with their vendor, Tex America Recycling, purchasing.
Pull this from the agenda. There have been some issues that have come up, and we are not prepared to go forward with it.
Table it, me?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry, seconded by Commissioner Heatherton, to table this issue. Is there any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it is now 7:31, and we are adjourned.